One of the largest ways we've moved this district forward over the last nine years is by increasing the standards for our children and the support that helps them get there. We also want to increase opportunities for students in strategic areas that are high priority, particularly for 21st century and the world that our students will be entering. These areas include literacy, STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Personalized learning, it's more important than ever that students have autonomy and agency over their own learning. In this day and age where information is at every student's fingertips and they're able to create, the students who graduate from college today are likely to be creating their own job, their own positions, many of them in their own companies. It's critical that they learn autonomy, entrepreneurialship, creativity, okay? Aspects of personalized learning. And we're languages because we live in a global world. We want to maintain a broad diversity of course offerings. We are not a large school system, but we're extremely proud to say that our students have a wide access to a wide variety of courses. From technology to art to music to science, math, English, history, all of the subjects that you classically find at a diverse and broad high school are present here and our program prepares them for that high school. We want to maintain desired class sizes and we want to maintain customized educational support plans for our students. We pay attention to the growth of each of our students as an individual, not just as groups and not just as a class. We want to be able to support every child's growth. We also need to adjust and reallocate resources to reflect 11 years now of declining and shifting student enrollment. And last year's budget began to emphasize that and this year's budget will even more so. So one of the analyses I wanted to do this year that we've been looking at for a couple of years now, but I've never worked into this presentation is how are we doing in terms of finances and achievement? Because really budget season is the ultimate intersection of those two things. And so we went to the state calculated per pupil expenditure, which last year for the 17, 18 year was $17,805. That is not our budget divided by our number of students. What the state does is it equalizes it out across all districts. So it takes out some functions of a school district that can vary widely between districts. I'll give you an example. Our transportation is more expensive than if we were a densely populated suburb. A densely populated suburb can transport students significantly less expensively than a large rural district like we are. And so it removes some of those items in order to equalize and in order to make apples to apples comparisons. Similarly, the state has an entire achievement matrix. It does not, it is not based on a single exam. It is based on a wide variety of measures of student achievement and growth. And it rates every student or it ranks every student and it ranks every school and it ranks every district. And so our state calculated per pupil expenditure, our state rank is 76th in the state out of 167. Our state calculated district performance index just received last week is 89.5. Our rank is 16th out of 167. The narrative on the bottom of this slide is not written there is 75 school districts in this state spend more money per pupil than we do. Only 15 achieve better than me. For those of you that wonder how this has grown or improved or not, 10 years ago, we were 77th for achievement out of 167 districts and we were around 83rd for per pupil expenditure. So our per pupil expenditure has not changed very much, but our achievement has changed greatly in the last nine years. Budget history. Again, let's look at our historical budget for about the last 10 years. On the left, you have a grid with our historical budgets. On the right, you have a graph that looks at the percent increase rapid in years. If you look across the last 10 years, the average percent per year that we've risen is 1.42%. Over the last seven years, it's 1.36%. 1.24% over the last five years on average, but over the last three years, it's only risen half a percent. The economic forces on the district have gotten tighter and tighter. With the state giving less and less money, with the tax structure becoming more and more problematic, the board of education has worked to make the most out of every dollar and still have the high performance that you saw on the previous slide. So let's get to this year's budget at this point in time. Remember, this is not a final product. And so the superintendent's proposed budget at this point in time is $42,865. That's a 1.6% increase over last year. Gross.
Excuse me? You said 42,000.
42 million, excuse me. Pardon me. Thank you. Yeah, we'd really be doing great things with only $42,000. So $42,865,000 for a 1.6% increase over last year. That's our gross budget. That's all of our expenses. We however get some revenue. And when you count the revenue in, we're expecting our revenue to go up about $208,000 this year. That's largely based on special education reimbursements that we're anticipating. Our net budget is actually an increase of $470,000 or 1.1%. Net budget is what most towns and districts represent. We separate them just so that you can see our total cost, our total revenue, and then what our budget actually is after you net the revenue out of it. Each year, we also have an audited fund balance. Those are the funds remaining from the previous year's audit. Those get given back to the towns in terms of a credit so that they're billed less. And so this year, our audit assessment will return $643,000 to the community. That was largely a function of the fact that because the state was restricting our money to the funds to the district and to the communities, we had a spending freeze on for that particular fiscal year for a large portion of the year. And so that accumulated an abnormal amount of money. Classically, we have about $200,000 to $300,000 in that audited fund balance. It was double last year because of the spending freeze. But that goes back to the towns and that gets credited against their assessment. And the budget as it stands is a tenth of a percent increase in the bill that will go to the towns. And so the towns, the audit or the town assessment will be up $30,000 to the two towns for a tenth of a percent increase. What's driving our budget up the 1.6%? There are two sets of items on this slide. The ones in black are the ones that we really don't have a great deal of control over. They're either inflationary or contractual or related to debt structure due to building improvements. The one in red were things that we were looking, in red, we're looking to invest in the school district for next year and there was some decision making on the administrative and the school team's part. Health insurance is going up $409,000 next year. That's just a projection. We've yet to get the number from the state. So we're putting an 8% placeholder in. Historically, we moved to the state health insurance plan a year ago and historically the state health insurance plan goes up 4% to 5%, not 8%. But last year it went up 8% and so we're just holding a safe placeholder for now until we get the final number. While we work with the board over the next four weeks, hopefully we'll be able to get a more confirmed number from the state. Student services tuitions, those are the cost of outplacing special education students to specialize facilities to meet their educational needs is going up $133,000. Support salaries are going up $107,000 as contractual. Professional services largely related to special education again are going up $42,000 and our debt, particularly our interest, not our principal, is going up $84,000. And we'll talk about that during the workshop a little bit about what that's related to. There are new positions in this budget that I'll describe in a second that amount to $67,000 of requests. There's new equipment that's actually a $50,000 increase. It's actually a $100,000 request, which is a $50,000 increase over last year. There's a technology and software request for $32,000. A technology replacement, which is to continue our $50,000 contribution to a four-year rotating lease. That $50,000 lease will buy $200,000 worth of technology this year. And textbooks at $20,000. And so what are these investments with a little more information or detail? The new positions, we're looking to increase math courses at the high school, particularly offering advanced placement B.C. calculus. This is the highest level of college-level calculus taught at a high school. We already offer the A.B. level calculus. And we're also looking to offer support at the math, support in math at the high school for students that we've identified that need math support and at the middle school. So we're looking to add a math teacher at the high school and a math coach. And it'd be a halftime math coach at the middle school. There's also been a request that I'm supporting for athletic coaches. Want a head indoor trap coach. We have one indoor trap coach head coach right now. We have a burgeoning, a more than burgeoning exploding trap program and an extremely successful one. Those that have paid attention know that that program has brought home numerous state titles for four or five consecutive years. At this point, we have a single head coach for boys and girls trap. We are looking to get a head coach for boys and a head coach for girls. And then assistant football coach. Football's a very large program. This would be incorporated for both varsity and JV and it would bring the number of assistant coaches up to four. New equipment, we'll ask you for a $100,000 request, which will buy a variety of them. We'll go over this in more detail in workshops over the next four weeks. But we're looking to purchase classroom furniture, some because of program changes, but a lot just because of age. We've said no to classroom furniture for quite a few years now and it's reached a point in time where we can no longer say no. This is a falling apart from under our children. We are looking to buy science equipment. This is exciting. It's everything from microscope replacements to actual new telescope for the astronomy program. Student services adaptive technology. More and more of our special education students are being supported in their success via technology. Everything from iPads to laptops to auditory assist devices. And so we have a variety of students that we've identified. This is actually based on known students. We're not guessing or just adding. They're based on known student needs. We're asking for student adaptive technology. And then we're looking to build out collaborative learning spaces, the first phase of that, which is furniture in the high school. We're looking to build spaces where students can go outside of classrooms to work together. We're looking to, without having to build, this is actually a fairly cost-efficient program that we're looking to run because we're not looking to actually re-engineer or re-architecture classes. We're looking to actually take advantage of spots in the building in the high school where there's a large amount of hallway space that we can add high top tables, we can add counters, we can add high stools, we can add collaborative tables where students can go out in the hallway and work together in collaborative ways in this blended learning model where sometimes you're in class and sometimes you're out of class as you learn. And we're looking to fund the capital account 1% allowed under the statute. That's $421,000. In the past, we have often funded that at the end of the year, but for the last two years, we have tried to make an emphasis to fund that at the front end of the year. It's critically important that we keep our capital infrastructure up to date and well repaired and we can only do that if we fund that at the full level. Lastly, technology. We're looking to purchase technology software. First of all, there's rotating tech lease that I talked about. That's $187,000, four-year rotating lease. This year, we'd be looking to purchase teacher and classroom computers at the elementary school and middle school and the intermediate school in the amount of $102,750. And we're looking to buy student Chromebooks at the intermediate school. We would have to be replacing, we'd be looking to augment student Chromebooks or laptops anyways. And so what we decided to do is outfit the intermediate school fresh so they had all new technology. This will actually benefit both the elementary school and the middle school because rather than taking the fourth grade laptops and moving them all, and the fifth grade laptops and moving them into the intermediate school, the fifth grade laptops can stay at the middle school, thus creating a higher technology density at the middle school. The fourth grade laptops can stay at the elementary schools, thus creating a higher technology density at the elementary schools and our intermediate school can be fully outfitted. And we're looking to buy Chromebooks for the blended learning program. That's the students leaving classroom to continue learning collaboratively outside the classroom in collaborative areas or the library or the learning commons or the cafeteria. So where does the budget go as a whole? This pie chart's up every year. Every year, it just basically shows the ratio. We are an education organization and therefore human capital is our largest percent of our budget. Salary and benefits are our largest portion. Unique to being a regional school district is the fact that in our buildings and grounds is the ownership of our buildings. We own our buildings, we own our property. Therefore, we bear the cost for capital improvement, we bear the cost for building improvement, we bear the cost for property improvement and maintenance. And so that amount is there. Transportation is up there. Again, I spoke to the fact that as a regional school district across a large square mileage area, we have a high transportation. Enrollment history. This slide is here annually and you can see from 2009 to 2018, we were 2,507 students in 2009. We are currently 2,029. So we've gone down approximately 500 students over those 10 years. And so earlier I showed you a slide that showed you the gross budget, the net budget, and the assessment. But the assessment was combined for the two towns. It was a tenth of a percent increase. This is what it looks like across the two towns separately. And it also shows you the enrollment this year in the two towns. Haddon represents about 59% of our district enrollment. Killington represents about 41%. The budget is distributed proportionately to those enrollment percentages. And so you have the gross budget distributed proportionately. The audited fund balance will be given back as a credit proportionally. And then you have the net budget assessment. Under the budget as it is right now, the assessment of the town of Haddon would be going down 0.73% this year. And so it would be under the assessment last year. And Killington would be going up 1.25%. This has to do with the ratio of children. Over the last couple of years, it's actually been Haddon that's been increasing assessment-wise and Killington's been going down. But last year, Killington grew at a faster rate than Haddon for that one year. So it creates this particular ratio. And so as a result of our declining population, one of the things everybody, as people may have heard, we're looking at restructuring the district. And I wanted to capture the cost that's already baked into this budget of restructuring the district. And that cost has two components, personnel and infrastructure. And this slide, actually back in the very beginning of this process, or at least around the time the board voted on it, the board was given a modeled projection of both personnel and infrastructure. This is now, while it's not quite completely finalized, it's significantly more than a model. This is based on what we believe will be the actual personnel changes and the actual infrastructure changes. And so we've begun to make those changes in the budget. Under the district restructuring, we're looking at a reduction of 10 certified salaries. Certified salaries are teachers and administrators. And I'll talk more to the administrator portion in a minute. And so there'll be 10 reductions in salaries and the equivalent reduction in benefits. So the total, and then in non-certified salaries, there'll be four positions reduced. Non-certified salaries represent custodians, secretaries, paraprofessionals. And so there'd be four positions reduced there. For a total of 14 positions reduced overall, the total salaries and benefits reduced is $1,089,000. We are however, under the restructuring, recommending a new position at the intermediate school, middle school. We are looking to switch out the assistant principal position at the middle school for a dean of student life position. There would be two principals in that building. One of the intermediate school, there'd be a principal of the intermediate school and a principal of the middle school. The assistant principal would be replaced by a dean of student life. It would be a certified teacher. It would be a teacher leadership position. The teacher would not teach courses. Their whole job would be being dean of student life. Dean of student life would deal with lower level student discipline, would also deal with all the after-school activities and clubs and sports that are at the middle school and will be at the intermediate school. They'll also be responsible for student programming, cultural life, cultural arts programs, community life programs, whether it's an anti-bullying, whether it's focused around anti-bullying or any of those other types of programs that we currently run. And so we think this position has a lot of use and a lot of positive impact on the two schools. But we think it's an excellent opportunity for one of our teachers who's already here. We're hoping that a teacher leader who's already in our system. This is a year where we're already laying off teachers. We prefer not to go outside of our system to hire. We'd like to use the talent we have here. This may very well in fact allow a teacher who would have been laid off to garner a position. And so we're hoping it works out in that way. And so that position will cost $118,000, a high-end certified teacher with, did we calculate this with extra days? I think we did. We calculated it with extra days on the front end of the year and the back end of the year for planning and working with the administration. About, we're projecting about $99,000, benefits of 19 for $118,000. And so the net salary benefits savings in the budget as we begin to work on it, we're only beginning to work on it together with board, is $970,849. In addition to that, there are two positions that were requested this year in the budget. There was the math coach at the middle school that I already referred to. And there was the art, there's a half an art teacher that was requested at the high school. A lot of this has to do with the high school population increasing. Although the population of the district is decreasing, the high school is going through a bubble right now. It's a bubble that went through the middle school over the last couple, few years. And so the high school population is up, which almost always causes your course numbers to go up. And we've also, we're looking to add courses at the, or excuse me, that's actually the math teachers, that's not up there. But yeah, the art teacher and the math coach are both related. The art teacher's related to population of the high school. The math coach is related to something the board is well aware of and has heard in our continuous improvement conversations. And that's our continued identification at particular grade levels of a weakness in mathematics. These are students who were caught in the transition from the old math program to the new math program and they really need our support. And so we want to make sure we're providing them as much support as we can. And so that math coach and the math teacher at the high school are all about that. We won't need to add these positions because with the restructuring, we could have cut half an art teacher and we could have cut half a math coach. But because they were requested, these positions are available to just move into the new requests rather than hire from outside. And so there's a cost savings here of $82,000. Were we not to restructure, we would still be asking for half a art coach and half a math coach and we would have to hire. Infrastructure. At this point in time, this is what we've removed from the budget. It's not all of it because we're not assuming that we won't own HES next year. And so we want to make sure that we can take care of our property and be responsible community citizens. And so buildings and grounds, so you can see buildings and grounds, purchase services, trash removal, telephone, custodial electricity, and heating. All amount to $126,000, almost $127,000 removed or saved from the restructuring in this budget. There's a remaining $80,000 that is a round of variety of things. Everything from continuing to heat the buildings, you have to have a base level heating for the safety systems and the sprinkler system to continue to operate. You have to have electricity for the alarm system to operate. And so there's a variety of things that we have to keep in there. Right now, they amount to $80,000. At some point in time, should we no longer own HES, that $80,000 would be removed from a budget. And so what's the budget impact due to total district restructuring? Personnel. Okay, you can see again the calculation of what we reduced, what we added in the cost avoidance totals $1,052,000. Infrastructure. The 1920 budget removes 126 or almost 127,000 with $80,000 remaining. There is a potential for a $207,000 infrastructure. The total budget impact at the point in time at which we no longer own HES would be $1,260,000. The total 1920 budget impact as it exists now, as the board begins to work with it, is $1.179 million. This is the last slide and it's a great reminder that this is a waypoint presentation. The board and the administration and the schools will continue to work on the budget over the next four weeks. And there were items that were even open on my plate that I wanted to make sure that it stuck a bookmark in. And this is my bookmark, okay? We still need to drill down and figure out the high school fuel and electricity. We're installing new boilers here in the high school and we have a brand new photovoltaic system. We reduced the oil in the high school last year to this year and we reduced the electricity. But we didn't reduce it to the degree that we can. And we need to still work with the engineers to determine over the next three weeks how much we can reduce that by. There's a possible new statute that's being kicked around that could make a percentage of teacher retirement the obligation of the communities. We don't know what that will look like. We have some general ideas. We know what the statute, the draft statute looks like and we have that. And I want to bring that to the board and I want to talk to the communities and we want to make sure we're aware of what the possible fiscal obligation of the communities will be and that we are supporting them. And so we'll have a conversation about what is the possible teacher retirement contribution? ECS funding is education cost sharing funding. It's funding from the state that goes to the towns to help support them for the amount they pay for education. ECS funding has been a very volatile issue over the last few years and we think we know what ECS will be, but it's going to be critical that we sit down with the towns and that we sit down with the state and that we verify what we think we know so that we're all playing on the same page and that we all go into our budget, our respective budget seasons with those numbers and our approach to those numbers in coordination. We need to finalize personnel. As much as the personnel is up there, anybody who's ever lived through March budget season knows that it's a very volatile budget or personnel season. We may still get some retirements, we may still get some resignations. We may be able to do some hirings for some of the vacancies that we have in the district that will help us figure out actual, some actual costs in what are now projections. And so netting out vacancies, creating new positions, retirements, resignations, and finalizing the reduction in force. We're working with the various unions, custodian, support services, teachers, and administrators on the contractual obligations around that reduction in force and we'll be finalizing it next week. At that time, we'll be able to again finalize or confirm the numbers that we have. Lastly, and it may seem like an odd thing to have up there just because why isn't it in there already? It's not in there already because we had so many moving parts that I just didn't put it in yet. And I wanted to have a conversation, a deep conversation with the board. Rather than putting a number in there and then having the board react to it, during workshop, I'd like to have a conversation with the board about security upgrades and how we can on an annual basis make sure that we are able to keep our security systems in top-notch order on behalf of our schools moving forward. We've done that in the past. The board's been very supportive and I think it'll be a worthwhile conversation. So these are just open-ended items that I look forward to working with the board on. I'm sure the board, when they review the budget, will have items they too want to work on and we look forward as an administrative team to work with you. Yep, hang on, I'm looking backwards. See? Technology. That's the presentation for this year. Does the board have any particular open question? Remember, we will be working together frequently over the next four weeks winding down this budget. You have a large budget binder in front of me. The one thing I will let you know is that unlike typical year, we don't have the budget at this point by location. We have it by object. And you have all the detail on the objects in your binder. But by location, because there are so many moving parts with the restructuring, we've yet to move everything to the new transferred location. We will be doing that. By the time you finish your budget and you present it to the community, it will be finalized by object and by location because you will help us do that actually by making the decisions you make. And then that will be there. But object is there and we can certainly get you the information you need around various locations if you have those questions. I'm not going to be able to hear you. Do you guys want to move to your seats? For... It's probably just a switch on the other ones. So before the next meeting, let's make sure everyone, they're all on.
So on the investment slide?
On the investment slide?
Yes, on the return. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah? The slide is behind you?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just wanted to say congratulations to you and your team in regards to this slide. I think this is really an outstanding consult over many years. Couple other things I thought also it's worth mentioning on the summary of total requests. The audited fund balance that we have $200,000 in that actually was due to the shift to state plan and insurance. So I just would be concerned that we didn't spend $643,000 out of the budget.
Yeah, we had budgeted, for people's understanding, we had budgeted a certain amount because we thought we were going to carry forward with our plan. Then after the budget season closed and we already had our budget done, we renegotiated to the state plan and saved ourselves $200,000. That's being returned to the towns.
And then lastly, do you have any sense of quantifying the governor's budget for the teachers' pension at the local level?
We do have it. We'll give it to you. I'll send it out by email. There's been a variety of numbers kicked around or percentages kicked around. Everything from 25% and then a variety of sliders there for. In the implementer bill that came out, what they did is they instead said that for year one and year two, they're recommending that the towns pay an amount that is off of a chart, off of a sheet. So they created with no, I don't know, I don't know where the formula came from, but it's an amount, the idea. And then by year three, it's 20... And then, by year three, it's twenty-five percent. The idea was, in their mind, that they're creating an honorant across three years to twenty-five percent. We have those charts, and we'll be able to share with you what year one and year two could look like if it gets through in its current form. I hate to prognosticate whether it'll get through in its current form, but it's an extremely complex bill. I would bet that it at least gets tinkered with.
And then, ECS and the special education grants?
ECG.
ECG, yeah, we're looking at them to be largely the same at this point, given what the governor said in their budget, or are we looking to see those also cut?
Actually, we believe that, we believe that, we want to verify this, but ECG, first of all, is still, right now, based on the formula. And so, we can project our ECG off of our, it's based on our known costs. And so, we're based, our known costs are going up, and therefore, our ECG is expected to go up as well. In terms of ECS, the state, there are, the state has issued numbers around ECS, and what I'd like, that's what I was talking about, I'd like to sit down with both the board and the municipal leadership, the town leadership, to talk about what are the numbers? Are we all looking at the same numbers? Do we all see them the same way? Do we understand them the same way? So that we fully understand what the towns are getting. Remember, ECG comes to us, ECS goes to the towns. But ECS going up or down impacts a town's ability to pay for our assessment.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
And I just want to add my thanks to Howard and the team for the great work that they've produced and the work that we'll do together. Ladies and gentlemen, you may know in the booklet, there is a calendar of our budget workshops and how we will proceed through the month of March, and so, please take note of that. We are now on a weekly basis in the month of March, usually on Tuesdays for budget workshops that are special meetings of the board. Are there any other questions to the superintendent from the board at this point? Yes, Howard?
I have one final, if there aren't, I have one final comment. I just want to thank my administrative team and all of your teams at your schools because this budget and the achievement and everything in this presentation really represents your hard work and your commitment. And so, you really have done a great job over the last three to four months in an environment where there's a lot of moving parts between construction projects and restructuring. And you've really done a great job of leading your people and guiding your people and working with them, so thank you.
And thank you from all of us to, as you know, we have a regularly scheduled board meeting that follows this. I'd suggest we take perhaps a fifteen-minute break and maybe we can begin that meeting at about?
You can't begin that meeting early. Post it at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Then we are taking a twenty-five-minute break, and we will begin that meeting at seven.